...
Oh, she's not.
Yeah. I thought it was building the river. This was supposed to high now.
Should've gone.
But then we turned to you, I mean by the time you have a meeting.
It gets everywhere.
What does damage so long though? It's like one that's natural work. It's just on the front of us now.
It's probably on the top there.
Yeah.
Cause I've been in here and it's something that's tall.
Because I've been in here and it's something that's called.
I saw that. I started to respond. You only missed one, right?
And I will literally be on a boat in the middle of like it's good.
We'll have to do our best.
I'm so sorry. I've been, yeah, you know. Those dates have been planned for a very long time. I think it's about because it's the 13th and the 17th.
I thought it was the sixth and the 13th.
Oh, well, I'm here to sit. But I thought it was the 13th and the 17th. At least maybe I looked at that.
It's a test. Oh, we didn't know you were going to hear this.
My, my, my. I see me. I see her. Yay. You remembered one of us. So the soccer. Oh, okay. Do I get a tall tear?
A call to order, meeting of City of Rockaway Beach Planning Commission, February 16th, 2023 at 4:31. Call to order. We'll call. Phil Hassel is here. Pat Olson here. Sandra, not here. Sandra Johnson. Georgianne. Christina. And Stephanie. And we have one, okay. And so I'd like to, everybody have a chance to look over the minutes from last meeting? And any changes, any questions? Oh, yes.
I noticed they misspelled your name wrong on.
One time.
Under the public hearing.
Yeah. All good. Common error. Yeah. So I think we'll let that go. Okay. Someone make a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes is written.
In a second. Motion has been carried and all in favor of the motion?
Hi.
Any opposed? The approval of the minutes is completed. First, we'll have some citizens' comments and correspondence, and we have Randy Tompkins. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Yeah, we jumped right into it.
Awesome. All right. My name is Randy Tompkins. I'm 610 South Coral Street. I've been here since May, end of May, 2019. I came in today just to give a little insight of what it's like to have an STR next door to you. We actually moved in on the same day. The owners moved in at 6:06 on the same weekend that we moved to our house. And I'm kind of an outgoing rapper, so we met and worked through, getting to know each other through the whole summer. It was exciting how it's been on the road. So it didn't really bother me after, you know, it's part of life. But as time wore on, they told me if there was any problems, you know, to let me know. And pretty quickly, things started to rise. And when they would show up, I would let them know what things happened. And then I was met with anger. Pushback. Tons of light pollution. So it told me, well, they don't really, they didn't really mean what they said. They didn't want, they just wanted to. You know, they just want their house to be red. So here's what I'm up against. We all know the lots are smaller. I didn't have anything to do with how my house is situated to the house next door to me. So I have a hot tub 20 feet from my front door. It's been used as late as 3 o'clock in the morning. People don't understand when they come to a place like this, how far noise travels. And we've actually had neighbors a block and a half, almost two blocks away, start chattering to us the following morning after parties went on for several hours. And I've done asking what's going on. You know? So we're very tolerable. We try not to ruin people's vacations. We know they're paying their good hard money. It comes down to a little bit of respect for the neighbors, you know, because we live here all the time. And we certainly don't go out of our way to cause them any discomfort or have to compromise on what they're doing while they're here. We pretty much try to stay out of their landslide. So as time goes on, we have a house that's set up for 10 people and two dogs, having 15 people, five dogs, two cats. It turns into an enormous amount of volume. So my house faces their driveway, so this means that I can't in the summertime have my windows into enjoy the air and the sounds of the ocean. I have to close my house up. But I have 12 other neighbors that are to the south of me that have no impact on my day to day. So it's, it's, it's not that I'm looking to say, hey, I don't expect you, you know, to be able to do this. I'm expecting is to try to find a way to let these people know, you know, that if I'm not bothering you, you know, or causing you to shut down your house or leave the area because I'm doing something that you don't want to be a part of, you know? It needs to be kind of mutual, so I don't know how to achieve that. You know, but I can tell you, I've helped numerous people with car problems, boat problems, because they didn't have tools, that had stayed in that unit and went out of my way to be a good neighbor. So it's a lot of things that I see, it's like maybe when people are asking for these permits, that we should kind of look at the scope of what's happening with the homes that are going to be affected by the people coming in. Like, I don't really know anyplace around here, anyplace I've ever been around the cities, I think, that have a hot tub on their neighbor's porch 20 feet from their front door. And for two years, it was, it was the they had shower curtains for privacy. Well, the wind was here. And then they got shredded, and then they fell apart. No privacy. My front door to go to my backyard is right there. When you step out the door, you get a hot tub in the face. I don't really want to see it, you know? But it's kind of like looking at somebody in the bathtub. So the other thing I have is, I know it's a thing, but the fire pit situation. A lot of my neighbors are expressing that within the neighborhoods, they would like to see this go away because down where I live, we have, we have prevailing north winds, northwest winds, and all of us are downwinds. So if I don't close my windows, my house will smoke. And I, in turn, can't do a fire and fill their house. I'm just trying to, it's somewhere along the line. We have to say, you know, this is good, this is good. So that I can still enjoy, you know, what I moved here to do, and have another thing that's open, and hear the ocean, smell the air. You know? Have the same opportunity that the neighbors have while they're here, you know? The other part I've already mentioned is happening to police trash that's not getting disposed of properly by management. So when things sit around for two or three or four weeks, and they're still sitting there, and these people are walking by it, and they're not picking it up, they're moving it, but it's never making it to the trash can. Well, so the wind blowing, right? So where does it end up eventually? It ends up in my yard. Right now, I'm having a big problem with vegetation. They haven't taken care of the yard or any shrubbery. Yard's gotten both two times this year. It's full. I've read, I've read comments left by renters that they don't like to use the fire pit, but the grass was higher than the fire pit, so they had no way of sitting around the fire. It was like sitting in a hazy. And it becomes a fire hazard, even though it's green, it'll burn if it's hot enough. So we have some very large English flags that goes between my property and his who try to share it. So a little while ago, there was people there. It was overgrown. They couldn't get through to the fossils to clean their trap traps and wash their dogs off. So the next thing I know, they're walking around with my property to get to the hose. It's like, okay, I understand, you know, I can see what the problem is. It's not their fault that this stuff is not being taken care of. So I try not to get, you know, upset about it because would like to use the water. It's just not good for me to have them walking through my yard to get to it.
We reached our five minute limit.
What's that?
We reached the five minute limit.
I want to, I'll add, I'm gonna, I'll call, I'll contact you maybe tomorrow. I think, I think I can help with a lot of these issues.
Actually, I have a question because, because of the things, so noise complaint over occupancy and trash are all, like, they can get a citation for that. But we don't have an enforcement yet, so, but can they, can he, like, call and, and say that they're not? There's recourse.
I'll go over all that with you then. If we need to, I think the cost of run that, that place, is that right? We can even call them up and say, this is one particular house. We have a lot of issues there. Can you work with us?
I contacted, I contacted about the shrubs. The owner showed up and he actually cut the flags that stands in the garage. And then the R and D lights are out and say, hey, you know, this isn't over here that blocks the water holes. Not the one that's growing next to the garage. It's not even close to them. There's a communication problem.
Mary?
I don't know. That would, you know, the shepherd or something. But I'm on city council, and just a few months ago, city council passed the ordinance. Its number is 22-442. It's on the city website. And I think this will make a difference. It's so recently passed that some of the things you talked about probably had been going on before the ordinance was passed. But this is what Luke is saying, that our city manager is saying is that since we have this ordinance now, we have city into to enforce it. And, and I think maybe hopefully some of the issues will be taken care of through that ordinance.
I gotta say, we just all work with each other, right? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Yeah, Randy Tompkins. Okay. We have any public hearings? On the agenda, but no entries. Okay. So old business.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to mention this, but I think Dan Howlett sent each of us an email requesting that the Planning Commission considering, consider ordinance number 5305. Is this a time that we should raise that issue or, you know, make it known what Dan Howlett has, is requesting? He couldn't be here today.
Yeah. Yeah, I read that also. I guess the question for whether we need to do anything about that or study it.
It's not on the agenda tonight.
Okay. So maybe make it next time or take a look at.
He's requesting that we take a closer look at ordinance 5305 to evaluate the effects of high cost for housing construction and higher rents.
Okay, well, that can be part of public comment. I didn't need to start it in the record.
Okay.
It's in.
Okay. Should I read the rest of his comments or? So that it does get brought to our attention.
I think we can put the document in as, because lots of times, if you don't, if you're not here in person, you get submitted a letter to the planning commission as your public comment. So that would be part of the public comment this meeting.
All right. I'd be glad to share the, this copy I made.
Okay, great.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Andy.
That is the right comment. Public comment.
Great. Yeah, okay. Well, we'll move on to old business, housing needs analysis.
Okay, I got a PowerPoint. I wasn't gonna do it.
Hooray.
It's a hell of a long one tonight. I'm not going to go back through this, but I just wanted to let you know that we are working on this. We are trying to analyze the contract. It's on my, it's me that's holding it up. It's my firm that's holding the contract. So hopefully that'll be done this month, and we can officially get kicked off next month. So that's my HNA update for the night. I don't know if you have any questions about that. I know that a couple of things that we've had requested that are going to make this meeting are looking at numbers of second home ownership and now we now know how many short term rentals there are. So we are, I'm going to ask the economists folks to help weave that into the analysis. That's not something that's normally done as part of the HNA. It's something that we all, that not people are investing. And we actually were able to figure out a way to get close numbers on the second homes. But it's not perfect, but at least you have that idea. So.
I sent some data and shared with today that I've been with, with both property taxes and tax bills that are mailed to Rockaway Beach addresses. And I've looked at voter rolls and unique addresses that have voters. And, and so there's about 2,200 dwelling units in Rockaway, City of Rockaway Beach. 412 are short term rentals. There's 894 unique addresses with voters. So that's a pretty good survey. It's interesting. There's only 600 and some property tax bills that are mailed to Rockaway Beach addresses. So.
And more voters.
It's, yeah, it's interesting. So I guess people have second homes and they go ahead and have their, their property tax bill mailed elsewhere. So that leaves somewhere around 800 second homes in, in, in Rockaway Beach based on. I'm sure Luke will share that with you. I'm, I'm sure there may be better ways to do it, but, but I, that's what I looked at. I looked at property tax rolls and looked at registered voters and.
And that, you maybe said this, but that was out of 800 out of.
2,200. What's interesting is 2,133 tax lots. Dillon County said there's 2,205 dwelling units, but they're pretty close.
Because you can have a tax lot with two, two blocks.
Bingo. Bingo. And then there's, our, our own data says there's 412 short term rental licenses, which is just under 19% of our housing units. And then 894 unique addresses with voters. So we have more voters than that, but some addresses have more than one voter. So I used the. addresses have more than one voter. So I used the four twelve, um, the eight ninety-four, um, and the twenty-two oh five to come up with somewhere between eight hundred and nine hundred second homes that aren't short-term rentals. So about twelve hundred vacation homes in town, which is about two-thirds of the housing stock, which is much larger than I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mary, really, I'd like, thank you for doing that research. That's really in, in, interesting information and I really would like to see that. And so I would appreciate if that, it does get sent to the, uh, planning commissioners.
It'll be part of the, this whole housing analysis, which is all home owners. And that's, it's funny because that's, Jerry actually did a bunch of research on that and using the, the tax data basically. Figure out where tax bill, where the new second homes are. That's, that would say, you know, cool, we can cross-reference those numbers and see how they look. Okay, cool.
Eye-opening.
I have a question for Scott. Could you tell us what the procedure is going to be now? I, I thought we, there was already a contract and that your, um, company was working on it.
So that the, the council approved the resolution to fund the contract. It's just getting through the review process of the contracting case. Shouldn't take this long, but it's been settled, so. It's a three-day, it's a three-day thing. It's my contract. It's not the city holding it up or anything.
Okay, and will it just be between your company and administration then, rather than the planning commission?
Yeah, you, you won't need to do anything with the contract, basically. Once, if, once Luke sees it, signs it and, uh, the owner, TJ signs it, then we're good to go.
So could you define good to go, does that mean?
We're ready to start. We can. I can't put any hours on it right now. But yes, it's not Luke's, that's me.
Okay.
Just to be clear. Uh, so that's all, that's all I have for the HNA.
Okay.
Updated.
All right. Any other questions? All right, then we'll move on to the Lakelight workshop.
All right. So next Wednesday, less six days from now, we'll be in here with hopefully a bunch of people. We have great, um, input on the survey. Uh, the plan for the evening is we're gonna just do a welcome. Luke and I'll do a quick presentation. Luke's gonna say this is our goal for the, this is the plan for the area. I'm gonna then discuss and go over the the survey results, basically, and then describe what we want the groups to do at the tables. Um, we'll then have the small groups work at the tables for, I don't know, thirty, forty, five minutes or so. Um, and then once, and they'll talk about what they want and come to some consensus about big ideas of each group. And then at the end, we'll have a spokesperson for each of the small tables stand up and kind of present that back to the group. And then we'll adjourn. Uh, so I just wanted to give you a couple, uh, some teasers on the feedback. This is just some of the things, the amenities that people said on the survey, major walking trail covered area, kayak launching, there are some things of kayak. Successful voting dock, fishing dock, bridges, playgrounds, concrete, launch, kayak launch. This is just a handful. I think our entire survey had thirteen pages of feedback. But what we've tried to do is we've boiled it down to trying to be big ideas so you're not reading some consensus. Yeah, but we're gonna go over the motorized versus non-motorized.
Yes, not tonight. That's really interesting, so I'm holding out for that.
How many people have responded to the survey?
A hundred and fifty-six?
How did you send that out?
Um, it's on the website.
Web page.
Oh, okay.
Yes, front page.
Okay, okay. So it was like in all the fricking groups that everybody's part of? Thanks, Jenny.
And then the questions that we have multiple choice on, we will have eye graphs for this. So I just gave you the very first question. I didn't want to spoil it. We'll save it for later.
I'm on the edge of my seat.
Uh, so we'll do that and then we created a map. Um, these are big maps. They're thirty-six by thirty-six. Um, you notice it's a big area to write and I'll bring pins and we'll have sticky notes and we can have good conversations. We will, we're gonna plan on handing out, um, the summary of the, of the, uh, survey results because I think that'll really help people with their discussion because it has a lot of ideas already there to react to. If people have a hard time coming up with something, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I think there'll be a good, a lot of lively discussion.
And who's facilitating this?
So, um, each table, what I was hoping we could do is I was hoping one of you all could sit at one of the tables if we could. And you're not an official facilitator, so I want you to be part of the discussion, but just making sure that the conversation goes smoothly and someone gets elected to be the spokesperson. And the cool thing is, unless you want to, you can say, I can't be the spokesperson.
But like, are you facilitating the meeting?
Yes, the discussion, then I'll go around and I'll say, who's your, yeah, I'll do time. I'll say, we have about fifteen minutes left.
This could be mayhem.
So make sure you elect your spokesperson. I do, I've done a lot of these.
Okay, great.
So it should be pretty fun.
I really appreciate the model you're using too with having the community so involved, having the community members report out. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and then, um, what we'll do is we'll have all the ideas from that and then I think, oh, the other thing I think we're gonna mention is I'm gonna put a couple of sidebars up in terms of what we could potentially do and not, just because there are some things that we probably won't be able to do because of zoning or or money. So we'll kind of have a little discussion on that. But it really is a vision process. Think about, you know, what is, whatever you wanted, what you wanna do. So hopefully we can lively conversation.
I am really sorry, I'm not gonna be able to be there. I've been having some health issues and I keep having to go to Portland for doctors. And I'm gonna be, I had it on my calendar, but I have to go to the doctor, so.
Are we gonna hit it on Zoom?
Um, no, we're not.
Okay.
Just because it's, it's gonna be really hard to, when you're working small groups at the map, just to format this.
Move over to hearing thing.
Yeah. And you, yeah, it'd be really loud in here. All the groups are working together. And I think the cause of eight or ten ground tables here, really just not gonna work, certainly with that thing.
Right, yeah. She's gonna kind of look at everybody, noise. Okay, good, Sandra.
When we were cracking last week, we noticed in a portion across the street from the parking lot that there were blue tape um, tied out to the trees. Did the city do some surveys?
So we, we hired a wetland scientist to basically go out on the side and, and, and make an initial determination where, what areas are wetland and what areas are not. Cause there's restrictions when you're working with wetland. And it looks like the entire site's a wetland. So that's what Scott was gonna go for on the, on the twenty-second. And what, what, where, where that leads us as far, what, what type of improvements we can make, if we're part of the fiction part. I believe it's an SA zone, which is a special area zone, which has to be environmental. Cause you have very limited things you could do.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I think one of the things we could do is get rid of that ten dollar.
It's resting away, by the way.
It's a community wants to pay ten dollars, yes.
Did you say you're gonna be part of this, discussing use of, I know the water body is controlled by different jurisdictions. But will be that be part of the discussion?
I, I think we could put it out there. I mean, I'm gonna be frank with people and say, I'm not sure what we have over that, but there's no reason you can't give us your feelings on it. We asked about it in the survey, so.
I was in, I was in that area knocking on doors at them flying households and had mobility challenged people for our emergency preparedness group. And I talked to a gentleman that, that looks onto the lake and, you know, he told me a horror story of women boats out there running around all the time and creating noise pollution, uh, for him. So, and he, and he's very engaged and he submitted a survey online for us. He can't be here. He's not in town for the workshop, but, but anyways, I just, I, I hope we have some conversations about that. Because if there is an issue, I think there's a potential issue managing the noise from motorized. And the potential pollution that it causes after the lake.
Oh, you'll be really interested to see the survey.
I mean, there have been hydroplane races out there.
Yeah, I mean, there's been discussions on compromising for people saying, you can do, you know, one week off, one week on, you can do Thursday.
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Probably some sort of compromise. But I do think those discussions will happen. I don't, I think I'm bored with that.
So with this, with the community meeting on this twenty-second, is this more just a brainstorming session with community members?
Yeah.
It's, it's not cut it dry that we'll do anything or?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're, we're getting, we're getting feedback on what, what we can come up with. So, and then at that point, you know, as city staff, we're gonna have to figure out, you know, what is actually allowed? And then what we have jurisdiction over and how we're gonna pay for it. I think by, uh, by understanding that planning commission will have the, the first approval of, of kind of concept what we're gonna build up there. So we'll bring it back to you all. Some, some culmination of all, all the good we get and comments. You guys will have a stat at it.
So is the county handled the drainage out of Crescent Lake, you know, when it backs up and then Lakelight will overflow?
City clears that up, right? If it backs in, if there's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it flooded a couple of times and it's, it's not a big deal as far as the road, but we're gonna be expanding into that area, which is usually underwater when it's, uh, roads covered. So we'll have to figure out a way of keeping the drainage a little bit flowing.
Yeah, cause that parking lot, that's still up.
Yeah.
Okay, well, any other questions? That's, that was my update. It should be a good time.
Okay, all right.
I have a request for just one second. I would like to see the city put out some cookies and coffee and tea and stuff for the participants to, um, as a welcome for their input.
There's a whole bar behind us.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, we can do that. That's actually a really good idea. That's something that.
That feels welcoming and.
We'll have to stock the bar then.
I'd love that back bar. I'm like, I'm gonna buy that. Don't know where I'm putting it, but it's going somewhere.
It's a biggie. All righty, so new business. We're gonna talk about planning commission priorities and projects.
So that's in your packet. Um, I do, that's one edit that I found after an argument out. It's under, um, the projects completed in twenty-two. The third bullet says some discussion but no direction from council. I should say adopted by council. Actually, I may as well start with that. I had that. Start with what's been completed. So, um, interestingly enough, we did, this is one of our projects that was completed last year. So I just wanted to point out that this was on our list from last year and it got taken off a little bit.
We did it.
Good work, good work.
Proud of us. I have a question about that. We did do a news ordinance, yes, but a lot of the citizens keep talking about, are we going to be looking at short-term rentals as far as limiting the number or limiting where they can be? Um, I think that we should consider having, you know, one of our prior things on our priority to look at that issue, you know, whether, you know, we take any action on it or not. But I think it's really important that we look at, you know, whether there should be some limitations put on short-term rentals. There's a big, you know, request for that from the citizens.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're waiting for, frankly, direction from council.
I thought it was, that we were kind of, it was part of the housing need. Are we waiting for information?
The, the housing need will, is gonna help. Now we have the numbers too, that, that's really helpful too.
I was gonna say, I don't think council will give any direction until they have some data to back up what they want.
Yeah. And, and frankly, I've mentioned this before, I don't know if the, the housing needs analysis is gonna answer that question, other than allow you to know numbers, actually have numbers in front of you, because that's been the issue the whole time is that it's like, well, how many do we have?
Yeah.
Where are they? So once we know that, I think that's, that's something that, yeah. So I don't know if the council will wait till after the housing needs analysis. Maybe we get, you know, through the front, front end, I mean, we know the projected need and we know that building lands inventory and then that's enough. They don't have to wait, might not have to wait, so. I'm just not sure when that. And Tillamook County is putting a monumental amount of effort into their short-term program right now also. And whether or not they finish that process, when we're ready to look at it again, I think there's gonna be a lot of information uh, and data that we can pull out of what, what they've, they've gone through, all their, uh, public hearing, listening sessions and what worked and what didn't work. You know, we can, we can, we can steal a lot of that from county, let them do.
Yeah, they need to reinvent the wheel.
Well, and yeah, if, there's been, it's been. It's a very, very hot topic and it's difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Along the coast.
Mistakes and things that were done wrong.
Yeah.
If I can just add, when, when, when you do all have a conversation about rental, about rentals and ordinance and what we do that don't want to do, I hope you'll keep in mind that it tends to be an asynchronous conversation in the community. On the one hand, we have residents. Randy is an example of that. On the other hand, we have real estate agents, we have builders, we have current and future short-term rental owners. So there's a lot of power on one side and a little bit of power on the other side. So I'm, I'm hoping that both council as, as elected representative of the residents and you all as appointed will, will recognize that, that asynchronous nature and you can find a balance. Don't just listen to the, the loudest noises out there. That side of it can be very, very vocal and very persuasive and they have, and I don't mean we shouldn't listen to them, obviously. Think about what they have to say in their, but remember the residents tend to be a little dying voice compared to that side of the discussion.
Yeah, thanks.
I have a question, like it kind of goes with what you're asking, Sandy. Right now, would it be the, um, commission's prerogative to continue working on short-term rentals? I, I got the feeling that right now the council was working on it. So I, I guess I'm just questioning what the council's desire would be at.
So we actually asked, this council actually asked the commission to take a look at, uh, not to take a, to take a look at, I'll just put it that way. And we left it so broadly and so open that taking a look at it could mean almost anything. It could mean what Luke just, what he just said about examining what other people around us are doing, waiting for the data and stuff. But yes, it is on your agenda because we did ask you to quote unquote, to look at and report back to us.
So then, I guess, and what I'm hearing is that, so then it is up to us to decide when to put it onto our agenda? So how do we decide that?
I mean, I'm not sure what, it really needs to be a council action at this point.
Okay, but that's what she just said that it isn't. So that's where I'm confused.
Yeah. No, I, I didn't mean, so generally the way things work is the council doesn't do any research on their own. Or let me, let me rephrase that. We do extremely limited research as part of the council. And we actually, we, the council doesn't do any research. We get it from Luke, actually. And he will give us some limited research on next. What we depend on is the planning commission to do the research for us and educate us and inform us about what the situation is. And so I think, again, what we said we wanted from the planning commission was very broad and general. But I got the census from the rest of the council that what we were wanting was just information from you all on like what you were talking about, like what is our housing need? What is the analysis of our housing need? How's it playing out as Luke said in other communities? We're, we're looking for that information to be passed up to us.
Okay.
So I would say it is on your agenda for your, right, which is the housing needs analysis.
Okay. So once we have that information and you can provide us with the housing needs info and Luke can provide us with the Tillamook County info, then we can take that in as a commission and make suggestions and then pass it on to, okay, cool.
Exactly. So I think, I guess we are, we're working on one of our project.
Okay, cool.
Yes, and to help out a little bit, it first came up, if you'll remember several months ago, the council started discussing a pause or moratorium on, on short-term rentals. And that was kind of like a panic button, pause. And, and then we realized we don't have enough information to even know if there needs to be a pause or not. And then that's when we said we'd like the planning commission to get back to us with some information.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we covered that one. We'll start that. I've already given an update on that. Uh, the second one is the, uh, master plan process for the high grounds. Um, purchase is in the works. Next step will be annexation. Then I'm gonna develop a public involvement plan that I'll run by you all to see if you'd like what I pitched to do that. Um, obviously we're gonna then need to do some site suitability, where existing conditions are there. And then the city's gonna need to decide, you know, what are kind of the main things that need to be on the site? And then we will be able to, I think this is gonna be a little different than, um, the Lakelight workshop where it's kind of, think about anything, there's gonna be a little bit more state of structure in terms of coming up. I, I think we'll go to the plant, go to the public with some ideas ahead of time because it's just specific needs that you met that I don't think we can just do. What do you want to do? It'd be nice, but I think there's requirements that are gonna be. But I think there's requirements that are going to be man first on the citizen. So it'll be a little different, but still, we want to do a public involvement plan for that. The next two projects is Lake Lidl Public Park. So our workshop on the 22nd, we're going to develop a list based on public input from the survey and the workshop. And then, as Luke mentioned, there'll be a concept plan that you are going to then come see and take a look at. At that time, public can weigh in on that too, because it'll be a public, public meeting. Mentioned they can come to that meeting. We probably won't have another citywide workshop, but we can announce that we're going to be discussing the concept plan. If you have input, please come to the planning commission meeting for that. And then the Sandbury Trail project. This, we're talking about Tiptide and John Paul at the outreach from the city site. Is that still true, Luke?
Yeah, we don't know.
Yeah.
It's an option. So Scott, our last council meeting, yeah, we, council contracted John Paul. His destination management by consulting company. So his first step is he's basically project manage that project for us and develop a design memorandum of all the public outreach we're going to do and give that to ODOT and say, this is, this is what we want you to design. It'll be $750,000 we have to set aside to do that. So the first thing he's going to do though, and he's going to be quiet for a little bit, but he's going to do a landscape assessment. And there's various agencies, the big one's ODOT, who's controlling the the line share and funding for the design work. And we need to finalize our agreement with ODOT because we're modifying it from a a design construction project to just a refined design to the final. So that needs to be finalized and then all the details of what what their procurement process is for their engineers and all the all the dates. And so John Paul's going to handle that and figure out what's going on with all the different players. And then we'll have a page on the website to keep everybody updated at maps, meeting dates, notes for minutes, monthly council council updates that John Paul's going to put together. So that's that's where you see it first is is some some information on the website. And then we'll put together all the all the public meetings and listening sessions and phone groups. Exactly what is is how we define the year, we'll represent that as well once we finish the landscape assessment. So, but John Paul's on board. And so we'll start seeing some movement there. And the idea is is to get it done as quickly as possible because there's a window where there's a lot of funding available right now for projects that are ready to go. Ours isn't ready to go yet, so we'll get it there and then get some funding to jump into construction.
And all this, just to clarify, the $750,000, that will be a contract awarded to someone that ODOT hires. So ODOT is managing it, the original grant is $1.65.
Something like that, yeah.
So ODOT's keeping the rest for managing the project. So just to put that in perspective. So and it's interesting.
No, no.
Yeah, so there'll be hired, there'll be a consultant that's hired. I actually had two consultants call me today saying that our needs that we released, I would so that that should happen in the next month and then a consultant will be hired here on that.
Scott, do you think what the consultant's role would be in this?
Yeah, it will be, there'll be civil engineers that can actually do design-ready plans for construction.
Such as if a bridge needs to be replaced?
Yes, all the grading and everything. It'll be a detailed plan of the trail for the cross-sections, all that engineering fun stuff that I don't, I don't think about.
And what to do, what to do with the parking and
and how to, yeah, and the grade of the rail.
Right.
I mean, it's just going to be a challenge. I mean, and we haven't even really determined which side of the tracks yet. I think that's going to be determined by probably John Paul. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I think that's going to be a cool one. Yeah.
I I was under the impression that this stuff was already being done by ODOT. Apparently, it's not. Is there a timeline on the grant that we've got that we have to have it spent by?
Good question.
It's years. Yeah, we're we're not in any, not in any danger of
burning out.
Any any deadlines.
Oh, good.
And that's another reason we're bringing on John Paul is because this has been sitting on somebody's desk or multiple desks at ODOT for quite some time. Somebody needs to spend some time to get things moving.
ODOT doesn't move quickly.
No. Apparently not at all sometimes.
So now that council meeting was brought up, plus some of the citizens of the high school in the crossing is part of this study to see how much the kids actually during school would be using this trail, how many kids leave school premises right now.
It was already done when they did, there was a grant that the city received several years ago, the Sakeras School Grant. And they did do some sort of study on how many
Yeah, could they do cats? Was there a concern that that it's not, it's not worth pursuing because there aren't enough students using the, using that that walkway?
That was a statement made, but it was no factual.
If it was there, maybe they would use it.
And also to remember that students using this trail is is a very small fraction of the use that it will get. It's not the total use.
And it used to be more used because the Rockaway Little Store was in business. Now they're down, nobody's going down there for lunch now.
And the reason, I'm bummed about it. The reason, the reason the the school is brought up, it's just, it's another avenue for grant funding that applies to our project. It's by schools and grants related to school activities. If it's not heavily used by students, that's okay.
Hopefully heavily used.
They will have fun to drink.
They will.
Well, walkers and bikers.
The track.
Little cross-country team.
If you're interested in learning a little bit more about this grant that Luke has received, that Luke wrote the grant, it's it's called the Community Pathways Grant and it's a grant that, and it's all, you can find it on, just type in ODOT, Community Pathways Grant. And they've been doing this for several years. They do small grants for $30,000 for a little thing in some town. And then they do, we, we got ours, I looked at ours, and ours was even the second or third largest in the state that ODOT came out. That was the original.
Well, actually, the first, this was the first year they did it. It's a brand-new, yeah, so the brand-new grant program. And so we were one of the first participants. And I think it was a $3 million total. We got $1.65.
Yeah, we were way up on the list. And they didn't give it to, it's over the whole state. They didn't give it to very many
So it was really good.
Very many towns. But if you wanted to follow the grant, see where we fit in with it, you could just Google that and it'll come up.
Cool. Then I guess the last one was, the stuff that might come back to us.
Can we go back to the high ground for a second?
Yeah.
So and and you may have already thought of this, so I apologize if I restate a thing, but when you get, when you start thinking about the public involvement, I mean, let me back up. When I was at canvassing during the campaign, a lot of people talked about the high ground project if they lived up on the north third corridor, Palisades Quadrant, up in that area. Nobody talked about it like Lidl or over on South Six or Washington Street, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, obvious. So when we do do public outreach and we do involvement, I want to hear from everybody, but I think we should also place a special emphasis on on communicating with and talking to those people that right now think that their quality of life is going to be devastated by this this project. And we somehow need to hear from them, understand their concerns, address their concerns. Or or it will be a bit of a
Yeah, I actually made an effort to go reach out to Palisades, those were the ones that did the urban growth expansion because that's when people started hearing about, what is this all about? And, you know, that was really important to go up and talk with them because frankly, they were, they didn't, they didn't know what's going on. So we needed to explain to them that this might not be the world, this might actually be benefits. It couldn't be all starred up.
And I would just point out too, that this has been going on, this this has been going on for several years. Scott and Luke have been harrowing this through the process. Bill and I think we're only two that were on the planning commission originally. I said Bill, I'm sorry. It's Pat was on.
Hello.
Sorry, Pat.
I'm not that old.
That was a zinger.
But but anyway, we had, planning commission had public hearings and the public was invited. So it had a lot of public outreach at the, when we were going through the process. It's just that it has been sitting now for, COVID kind of settled things and then everything kind of set for a little while. So I I do want people to know this did not come up as a surprise to anyone. We we had great public outreach as we were going through the process, just not recently.
And yeah, just the urban growth expansion, probably almost a year.
Yeah.
And then we also had, oh, we had to do a zone change.
And we had public hearings for all that.
We had to create a branding zone for it because we didn't have a public facility zone. So there's a lot of work that's kind of getting us to where we are now.
But I think at the time that you're talking about, there's been change in home and home ownership. So different residents from now.
Yeah. I mean, even when the county was, the notices went out just recently, there was a lot of what's going on?
Right.
Because it's it's legalese language. It's really hard to read and, you know, people don't really understand what's happening. The communication ahead of the game is better after.
Wish we could just do a project like in three months and get it over with. And then we wouldn't have this issue, but we're two years down the road or whatever, yeah.
And this is pretty complicated, really. Doing urban growth expansion. And then finally, just stuff that may likely come back, tree ordinance, we talked about others, only if there are changes that we've come across that we don't like. And that list, so we might tackle those if we have time. Again, long-term, someday we'll do contact. That's been, and we will know. And I know I have to call these, so that was, I'm not very nice to the current complaint. It's not as bad as it should be, it should be better about.
Good thing the plan doesn't have feelings.
One other issue that we we haven't addressed that often gets addressed at the city council meetings is the Anchor Street parking area and development of that. Is that something that the planning commission should be looking at? Or is that something that is already determined?
So the concept design is pretty much determined.
Yeah, the 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 design, the concept is done, the the engineer is basically done at this point. It's just a matter of getting the project completed and and funding it, of course, through the work process.
If you'd like an update, you could do each.
Yeah, and I I've actually, that's 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 on my agenda for the next council meeting, is an update on that. I've got meetings tomorrow. Most of my day tomorrow is 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 really working on the details. Where the engineers are at, what our schedule is looking like, what are the cost estimates for Anchor Street? And, you know, that was a project put together, not put together, but was prioritized by the previous administration, previous council, is ready to go. So it's really not, not at a point where it'd be nice to stop, it'd be good to stop and reevaluate where we're at. All the, all the, all the engineering works, the design work is pretty much done at this point.
There's some neat things though about it. I mean, yeah, it's designed so you could close part of it if you wanted to have it open for farmers market there or something or a festival there. I mean, the the ideas of the EV, our charging stations.
Eventually.
Eventually, you know, there there are a few things we could pull out if the if the planning commission really wanted to be involved. You know, for instance, it's going to have a, there's an area set aside, playground. There's nothing there yet. So if the planning commission wants to be involved in that, that'd be perfectly fine. Do that, give me some parameters, here's here's the size you want to be covered and what do you want?
The the reason I ask is because there are some public comments have been made about, you know, is there going to be a public input into what happens with that area?
It's it's just, it's a difference, difference of administration. Representative government and previous administration made decisions as as a council. And and there's there's been a shift to a more, more open and listening and gathering more, but unfortunately, that project didn't get that treatment and it's already about ready to go. So I think at this point, we're just going to it's a finding that we want to be involved in some of the details, but basically, if it's funded, we're just going to pull the trigger and do that.
In early 2022, the city council voted on a priority list for Luke to work on. And the Anchor Street project was on that priority list and that was over a year, or about a year ago.
I I've also heard the concern from residents and and, but Luke's absolutely right. It was a different time, a different place. I don't think it makes any sense to go back and re legislate it all over again. Run it through the new model that we now have in place because I think it's an awesome add to our to our community, myself personally, as mayor, let's just pedal to the metal, let's get it done.
And I really, I really want to stress, once the council votes for Luke to do something, it's really difficult to go back and change that. Especially when he's already in the middle of doing the work on it.
Makes sense.
Really?
Well, good. Righty, then. So we'll be with the planning commission comments and concerns. Oh, go ahead.
First of all, Scott, did you, I didn't know if you had wanted to make some comments tonight. And you did, did you sign up on the speaker list or you just here to listen tonight?
I did not sign up because I don't know what I'm doing.
Okay. You've stuck around this long, so I just wanted to ask.
Since I did sit in his meeting earlier, I wouldn't, I think it would be useful to the rest of the planning commissioners just to get a really brief snapshot of what he is interested in in Rockaway Beach. Could we do that? Take him out of turn or without having him sign up?
I think that would be fine.
Yeah, I just thought maybe you didn't know about the signing up.
I'd be happy to be in well.
Once we give them the comments, it is the end. So they'll decide. Yeah, yeah. And if you don't want to come in over here. Several of us have met you, but I don't think there are many people that
So we need the name and the address.
All right, I'm Scott Grabkey. My address is 26539 E. Way Drive. I've lived in Rockaway since 2013. I started out biking about a year and a half ago. Then I started out going to the hill, basically my friend's backyard where he had these neighbors that were scratched, but you know, like, developed a logging areas. And later went to seaside parks and they have a not quite professionally built, excellent bike trail system that's built by volunteers. And it is a ton of fun and I'm thinking, why not here? And with high grounds project, we're seeing it mentioned to be the high ground project on the map. It's it's very central to all of mountains behind town. We've got an absolutely beautiful resource back there that really I have bike trails on it. And my goal was to talk to the city about supporting that in, by just having public access. So one of the things about mountain bikers is they are trappers and and they're always looking for a place to ride. And here on the coast, even though it rains a lot, we have a pretty unique soil makeup that is absolutely great for mountain biking. So from May through November, we have what mountain bikers call heat rubber, which is just right amount of moisture in the soil that you can go fast, it's not slippery and you have as much money you can possibly have. And in my, my time on Facebook, the mountain bike forums, every day, there's people sharing where's best to this weekend, or traveling 100 miles, 200 miles to go check out Hood River or go check out Delaware Mountain up in Bellamy. These people are all over the place and they can be a great addition to, to our town to have. Having mountain bike trails up there, they're just fun and and really made good use as a place for people to access them. And then I got to go out and find some other people that want to do it to help, help. Basically, the way it's worked is usually a nonprofit. Either Rockaway Trail Alliance or possibly Torta to work out for Trail Alliance would be the nonprofit that carries the insurance and manages the trails on the land of it by Louis Clark. Louis Clark's got agreements with both of those groups for It's, by, uh, Louis Clark. Uh, Louis Clark's got agreements with both of those groups for where they have allowed bike trails on their farms. And basically, those groups manage the trails. Um, but the case of Clutch Creek provides the, the, the. Trails are all managed by.
Do you have a reference for Clutch Creek?
Yeah, Clutch Creek is about two miles up, I believe, it's just east of seaside. And that's our, that's our closest bike trail system right now. There's a, there's a big planned one down in Pacific City, but it's, I don't think quite under construction yet. One of the pitfalls or one of the roadblocks that we're into is they're doing theirs on forces. And so they're dealing with, um, the ranger, local ranger, and they've got five different rangers. And my understanding is they just did, it's called the NIPA, which is their, uh, so they're a lot closer to starting now, but, um, in our case, we just need to have a relationship with the, you know, authority, you know, as you're updating. They like having bike trails on their, on their land. A various, uh, uh, article about the way that Clutch Creek happened, and it was, it was interesting, and I still don't totally understand it, but like, Louis Clark's initial pushback was that their plan was efficient. They asked for fifteen miles of bike trail, and it's a mountain bike one forty-five. So, these are good people that have a factor, I think. Add a, you know, potentially very big economic benefit.
Got a question, because I don't, I mean, I'm super happy for people to ride mountain bikes, but I don't. Um, and I really like hiking, but I'm terrified of being mowed down. So if we're putting trails in there, can we put hiking trails too?
Yeah.
That, that came up in our discussion.
Okay, good. I, I've almost been mowed down before on a trail by a bike, like hauling ass and I was like.
And mountain bikers don't want.
Because they don't want us there either. Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, but the model that I've seen, uh, over in Washington is they, they have a huge mixed-use network. And the, the people on foot have right way. Um, they may basically start with their trail to make it a little wider. Um, but in, in our case, the, the route up is probably very reasonable to share because the bike are not going fast, in my mind. Uh, give a little bit wider trail, make it slow, gentle enough that it's, that it's hikeable by anybody that wants to hike it. And if they want, they want to go off, go skier, they can go skier. If we have a shared hiking route and, and perhaps, uh, let's work, um, specific use of several parts, I think.
Yeah.
Where the real danger is.
Yeah.
Not a big fan of mixed-use several trails by their.
I've seen, I've seen a biker hit, like, hit a dog and slip.
Yeah.
Because they were hauling ass down a hill, and there was a hiker and.
Or was it dealing with this?
Yes, that's where I saw it.
Exactly what happened is that, once they're mixed-use of the roads that really lie, so there's a lot of, like, water and bikers. And then there's, there's dedicated downed hills for biking, and it's definitely.
Yeah, like Wildwood, there's no bikes on at all.
Yeah, so is there a place to do it through? Yeah.
Scott, what would you, um, want from the city?
In my mind, the, the main thing that we need is a place for people to park, maybe just a bathroom, and possibly, you know, drop their garbage, do that early today. We have trash cans, bathrooms, and parking areas that seems to be sufficient for Clutch Creek. Uh, we talked today, what are the unique things about here in Rockaway? Most people with bike trail system, it's out of town. And we have the high ground project, so you could get more central to town. Just the easy biking range of virtually all hotels, all the condos downtown. We could, we could really have a, a pretty unique spot where people are, bike in town, putting bike ready. They don't have to drive there. And I was thinking about it after we met today, and, uh, visiting a friend who lives about two miles from their bike trails, it's easier for them to just carry on, swipe right there than it is to put the bike on the rack, turn the car down the highway, unload it, worry about car keys and all that stuff. Well, and I just was thinking about, for our, the Anchor Street parking, that's going to have bathrooms, right? So, and that's half a mile from the mountain, from the trail. And so it means we could direct mountain bikers to utilize our city parking method, right? And have a map to the trail. I mean, something like that. I think, I think the part that doesn't have necessarily be that trail. The important part to me is that the, 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 bikers will come, and then I guess the, if we make, so the bikers aren't paying for. Yeah, it doesn't have to be right there. Yeah.
Are there going to be any bike racks over in the Anchor Street?
Yeah, yeah, we haven't, we haven't, those are kind of the last things.
Less than, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Probably put more than we thought.
Like a little, uh, other called, little station that, wrenches, tools for airbags, tires, uh, yeah, you know, give them a bike, a bike area.
And one thing that came up in our conversation earlier today is, with this in place and bikers coming here, guess what business will need to open up in, in Rockaway?
Yeah.
Bike shop, another incredible commercial opportunity that would now be available to some enterprising digital group to put in here. And, uh, I don't think, where is the nearest bike shop?
Seaside.
Seaside.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh,
Way.
What a, what a, what another cool benefit spin out of this.
And people, uh, don't buy a bike there, they pop them, pop them on trails all the time. Need a place for people.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we need to go down the priorities?
Priorities.
I don't, I don't think so. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't opt them last year.
Yeah, we just.
It's up to you though.
Use message wheel. We want to?
You can.
Or we're just working parallel?
Before you vote, could I just say that the city council may spring something else on you that we don't know about now?
That's very true.
And, and so if you vote, maybe have it opened in a little bit.
And then I'll, I'll add to the council over the next, uh, next year or so, uh, we've been doing a lot of, a lot of longer-term planning and prioritizing, uh, of, of all the functions of the city, um, but also with, uh, parks and recreation and public facilities, uh, and, and things like that. So that list may grow once the council gets its own priority straight and, and it starts to be taken down and it's planned. So I, 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 I anticipate that will grow in, in the next six months, six, eight months.
And, you know, a couple of these were already on our list from last year. They just got moved this year, so this, so that happens to.
Continue, yeah.
Yeah, and then, of course, we have to be able to bring the planning commission stuff, which we have, we need some divisions or variances or which uses the, 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 to throughout here.
Okay. All right, well, any, uh, any commission comments? Start with, uh, is that, is that?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, I don't know, you were, I am a master recycler as well, and so I am attending those DEQ, uh, meetings.
Okay. Yeah, um, city's participating, Jeff, Jenny is attending to those meetings as well.
Great, okay.
No comment.
I'm just excited about our project.
Um, oh, once again, I'd like to request that on our website that we do, we put a link on the main page under short-term rentals to put our new ordinance under there. I think it would have, might be, have been helpful to, um, the gentleman, Mr. Tompkins that talked today, that maybe he hasn't, um, seen that new ordinance. It might make it easier for, uh, people that want to see, you know, some enforcement know what our ordinance says now. And, you know, it's easy to find that by.
And I, uh, for our newsletters coming out soon, I, I, I wrote a short piece on, on that, on the new, uh, uh, nuisance regulation, and, and I was looking at our website, I was trying to direct people to the right side. And right now it is geared toward, uh, short-term rental owners, um, and not so much those looking, multi-residents looking for the complaint forms or the rules or, or any of that. So, um, I already planned to kind of revamp that a little bit, hopefully before the newsletter comes out. Just, just, just for what you're talking about.
Okay, great, thanks.
Good, Stephanie?
Yeah.
Nothing? So, uh, I had a chance, I want to thank Mary for inviting me, Sandra too, to, uh, tour Lake Lisle from the, uh.
Well, I got to go.
Yeah, yeah, from the, uh, the wet side. Uh, it was absolutely amazing. I've, I've been by it several times walking, but, uh, be able to see close up both Crescent Lake and, uh, all of the, uh, the shoreline that's there. And, uh, the potential for that as a recreation area is just enormous. I mean, it's a wonderful, uh, it's an ad for Rockaway Beach. It's like we, we've got our beach, and then we've got the boardwalk, and now we're going to have Lake Lisle. Uh, it's the major attractions here, so I'm pretty excited about that, so.
And Bill, Georgia had previously been on the, on the lake with me, so now I think it's Pat and Krista and, and Sandra who haven't been. So the, so the invitation is still open.
Thank you, yeah, I couldn't make those two dates.
Well, we'll pick another date. I'm just looking for good weather.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
It's tricky, right?
Yes, and cold. I don't like cold.
We had a great day.
And, and Scott, I thank you too.
I've spent a lot of time on that, actually. I, I have tape measures going on, I think that's, do you love the show?
And I have also opened it up to the public, and I've had a couple of, um, community members, uh, take me up on it. So I wanted to stress that it's not just a planning commission event, it's open to the public.
Everybody.
It is really neat to see from the water.
Yeah. Yeah, we got to see an eagle. Yeah, that was really cool. All righty then. Well, I guess I will entertain a motion to, uh, close our.
What about staff?
Oh, step, sorry, step report. Oh, that was easy.
Jenny?
Who did, I didn't get a second.
Minutes.
I think it was.
Well, he.
He, he made the motion.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We're all like, I don't know.
That's so long ago.
Pick a name, any name.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Didn't move it to second, and so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Silence. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Nice work, team.
Yeah, this was a fun event.
This was a fun one.